Alright, meeting of Budget and Finance Subcommittee. Call the meeting to order. Roll call. Lindsay Masca?
Present.
John Quartz?
Present.
I'm Kira Follie and I am present. First item is discussion. Transportation. Three items to discuss in transportation. One is needs of the student body during and after school hours. Two is transportation options based upon that need. And three is cost associated with each transportation option. I'll hand it over to the superintendent.
Excellent, thank you. So, I would just like to begin the conversation saying that, you know, we certainly got some clear direction that the committee was looking for more information regarding, you know, multi-passenger vans and what the options might be and why is it that we consider we should benefit school districts. So, since that meeting of June 18th, we've been working on putting together some ideas and giving you some information about what our thinking is. But I would like to start and preface the fact that we have some new faces here tonight. We have Ryan Murphy, who is our new athletic director. Heidi Perkins, who is our new director of finance and operations. And I think that, given the fact that, you know, what we're talking about really impacts Ryan's program and is a financial discussion point, you know, the fact that we have two new people that are sitting here, I think we have to be cognizant of the fact that there's probably a lot more information that can be gathered. But I think, given the fact that we put together what we could in the time that we had, means that I'm pretty well aware of the fact that I think that there might be more questions that come up from this group and I think that's perfectly appropriate as we think about what might be in the best interest of kids moving forward in terms of having some multifunctional buses. So, we, I'll pass out, and we updated the memo that was in the school committee. Just because some people were in town, some people were out of town, and we had some clarification around one of the spreadsheets that we were operating off of. So, we just want to update it with current thinking about cost savings, which is a little bit less than we anticipated from the beginning, which is fine.
Thank you.
Okay. So, just to frame the conversation a little bit about why, why are we even having this conversation? One of the things that, I'm getting there. Sorry.
No.
Keep passing. So, one of the things that we know that we have in Water Town is we have oftentimes activities or events that require the transportation of students that are in a smaller number than potentially a large bus is appropriate for. And, given that, we were thinking about options that we could have within our system that we could transport smaller groups of people, whether it be for athletics, whether it be for academics, in terms of either transitional programs for our 18 to 22 program that we have within our schools, whether it be small field trips, taking people just if they'd like the knowledgeable. There's oftentimes where we're transporting students and we'll do it, so we make it happen, but it might be through parents driving, or students driving, or whatever ways we can have it happen. But I think that if we were to have some smaller buses within our system, that we'd be able to do far more with our students moving forward. And the reason that we're looking at this as opposed to the large van that we currently possess is that with a smaller van, you don't have the requirement of having a CDL, a commercial driver's license. So, therefore, it opens up a lot of flexibility in terms of people that could potentially be driving vehicles. So, I think that the interest is based on the fact that we know that in Water Town that there are many opportunities that we would use these vehicles. Above and beyond that, and this is, I mean, honestly pure speculative at this point, because I think that with a little bit more time, we could have larger meetings with, say, the council on aging, the rec departments, and even just planning in terms of having these vehicles available for the town as well. We know that the rec department has programs that they would be able to use the vans. Council on Aging actually threw a conversation with Heidi, also indicated that there are going to be some, I mean, there definitely would be some interest in having the smaller vehicles around. So, I think that we're talking about the schools, but we do know that these sorts of smaller vehicles would be beneficial not just to the schools, but to other town-based organizations as well. One of the things, and before I get started with the specifics, this actually came out of a conversation, we had a smaller group of people that were meeting about field use. And one of the things that we talked about in the smaller group, that was the former athletic director and the director of the recreation department, the town planner, myself. If we were going to maximize some of the use of our fields that are not close to the school, whether they be a mile away, a mile and a half away, two miles away, having vehicles to be able to transfer agents to practice, which is something we don't currently do, would provide not just, you know, better transportation for the students, but in many ways, I think that they are safer options, just to ensure that our kids are getting there together and being able to leave together. And, you know, sometimes our practices go towards the hours that get dark. It's just, I think, a safe, a safe option. Not that we don't think our students are safe now, but certainly it would be something that we'd be able to control better as a school department. Heidi?
Hi.
So, that was, that was another area that we were, that this had come up in terms of conversation, was transporting for practices, not just events. So, everything we have here is predicated on actual sporting contests, not so much practices. So, when we talk about funds, I think that what we're talking about is really documented runs that we'd be doing with full buses that we think that we'd be able to accomplish with vans. But this is just a small amount of what I think we'd be saving if we started adding on different opportunities, whether they be for practices or town type of cooperation, or in the day, transportation for some of our programs.
A question about the field.
Yes.
So, we don't, we don't currently transport kids to the fields. We also don't use fields that are far away.
Right.
And that the only, the main reason is transportation. Is that correct?
A pretty main driver, that it's, it's hard to make sure that all the kids are going to get there, that they're going to be, you know, able to get there in a timely manner, you know, who walks, who rides, you know. So, I think that that's one of them.
I would agree with that statement, that's pretty, it's pretty hard.
Yeah.
It's pretty hard to ask the kids to travel that far and walk, especially some of the younger students, especially with the software, it's kind of unrealistic, a bus, and I try to be really safe, they might, I would agree with that.
So, it, so, given our, given our current field crunch, this is a potential to allow for different field use, so we don't necessarily do it right now.
This would be a huge asset to get kids home earlier and be able to get more kids involved and get them to, for much safer.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
So, we, we talked about options in terms of things, and this is, we're just.
Is there any more questions?
Yes.
What's the difference between a 10 and a 14 passenger?
Yep.
And why is one better than the other, from your perspective?
Fourteen passengers.
Has more people.
The side of the obvious. Is there any other, like?
Fourteen, ten, one is fourteen.
No, 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 let me explain. That was really a flip answer.
That's okay. I appreciate the thought.
So, when we started the conversation around this back in the late spring, we were, we were under an assumption, that was a wrong assumption, that we had to have 10, 10 passenger vans based upon insurance.
Okay.
So, there's a difference between a 10 passenger van and a multi, be a multi...
Multifunctional student activity bus.
Thank you.
And that's the large one that we have now?
No, 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 no. It's a shortened version of that one.
I got you.
That kind of looks similar, but it's much shorter. And therefore, you don't have to have this CDL. So, that's the key. But since it's a bus, as opposed to a van, you can't have more than 10, you have the flipping issues.
Yep.
But a 14 passenger bus, because they're constructed differently, you can have without a CDL license. So, it's not, it's not the 24 passenger van. It's a, it's literally a 14 plus a driver.
Okay.
So, 15 total.
Okay.
So, we, when we, when we found this out, which was right around the same time that we presented to the school committee on June 18th, obviously, I think that, that, so, one, definitely the benefit of having this time to start the deeper investigation is to determine actually that we'd be probably better off, not financially, but in terms of numbers of students, going with that 14 passenger passenger van. The cost differences is obviously different, they're more expensive, but I think that it just gives you a lot more options in terms of the numbers of kids that you could have in there.
Yeah, a group of 10 students seems like a small number, you know, of what they're involved in.
Mm-hmm.
And we did ask Ryan, with one van or the 10s, would that sort of leave some teams falling in the gap?
Right.
They didn't quite need the big bus, but a 10 or two 10s or whatever, which is really not accommodated. He came back with, the reality is, it would be very few teams that could be accommodated unless we had the two 14, two passengers, because the kids just fall in that range.
So, he thinks 10 kids on the team were...
Yes, so he did a quick analysis, again, we haven't, unfortunately, had a lot of time because we both knew, but he did a quick analysis on, we looked at how many kids were in any different sports last year, and used that.
Do you, do you want to go over the options, Heidi?
Sure.
Thank you. I think you're far more entirely aware of what we have here.
So, we started by, the town of Millbury just went out and bought one of these and several other districts as well. It started by looking at what they did for their recent bid. They don't, Welsley just went out to bid and opened their bid, actually, about two weeks ago as well. So, it is pretty common that districts have these. Looking at their bid costs and then also calling the dealer, for the 2019 models, $55,000 would be around where we come in, might get something a little bit less. And there may be an 18 model that has not been sold yet, you know, that also we bring in, that might bring it down. So, we went with the high watermark of what we found out at $55,000 for 2019. Then, we looked into if we had the option to do a one-year lease and then really just have a lease payment and turn it back if we were not going to continue purchasing. And there's several lease companies that we talked to said they would not be interested in that.
Obviously, did we try a trial for a year?
Yeah.
Let's see if we can do one for a year.
And they, they just wasn't going to have it. Depreciation is significant year one, so it just, it wasn't what they want. So, I actually talked to the recreation director in town, and he had used in his prior employment at some colleges, leasing associates of need. So, he helped me up with that, a person from leasing associates of need, just to get an idea. And she came back with, in either two, you'll see the three options that are there. So, the three-year lease to zero would be $1,736 a month for a total of $62,506. That's with a zero buyout at the end of year three.
This is for one or two?
This is per. This is for one.
So, zero buyout means?
We would just own it. But essentially, those lease payments get us to, there's, we don't have to buy it out at the zero.
So, we own it at the end?
Yes.
Rent.
In that option, with these two zero buyout options here, A and C, if we didn't choose to keep it, they would sell it and give the proceeds back to the town.
Was there any, did they give you an estimate on what that could be, what those proceeds would be, or is it just based on you?
Now, I'm sure that they're still... Condition, supply and demand as well, so they, they did. And then, option B is the three-year lease with a residual of $22,000 buyout at the end of year three. So, while our monthly cost would be less and still in the same three-year period, we would have to pay our $22,000, which would be, sorry, which is sort of capital from the town to do the buyout. So, that would come out to a total of $65,000 to $1,800. Then, there's a 12-month lease to zero, same as in option A, just to do it with a one year, but the monthly cost are $4,800 essentially. So, while that comes out to a total of $57,337, and we would own it at the end of the year, I don't see how we could support that. I did, that's a pretty steep number on a monthly basis. So, those are the three options for one. And as I said, all of them are open-ended leases, so if we had a zero buyout at the end of the term, we just didn't keep it, as I said, the leasing company would sell the vehicle on our behalf and forward the proceeds to the town. And of course, as we said, with any of them, we'd follow the proper procurement options and follow the 30B laws or buy on the state bid list.
So, speed of mileage on the leases, are they?
Well, we estimated, what's in here? We estimated, just for starters, that we would do 30 miles a day. We looked up, you know, where the furthest league opponent is. So, 15 miles each way, 30 miles a day, using it 180 days a year, obviously, some days would be more, some days would be less, so we just used that as the average, for a total of 5,400 miles per school year. And the dealer estimated 12 miles per gallon, so if you look down under fuel, that's where this information is. And...
I'm sorry.
No, no, no. So, 450 gallons of fuel a year, assuming rough current cost right now would be about $3, the fuel would be $1,350 a year. Again, this is if we're just doing the athletic trips. But if we had them with transporting students to practices, additional scrimmages, some other things that Ryan pointed out, and of course, the field trips during the day potentially, our 18 to 22-year-old program, you know, maybe things we can do for them during the day as well. And then, if the recreation department or council on aging, you said, the council on aging director thought she would have potentially, they used to bring some of the seniors to their doctor quarters, but they really don't need a big cost for that. So, she's very interested as well.
To use during the day?
Yeah.
Correct. Also, for extended day, I know there have been a few times that kids have gone from extended day to the maker space. Is that something that we could use that for if it wasn't being used for athletics?
I have a question. In terms of like all of these potential uses, and this is sort of, I think, like, maybe once we have them, maybe before, it seems like it would be quite a task with all these different possibilities, possibly reasonable, each job is it to schedule it. You know what I mean? Because it's not, you know, like, that's not a small, with this many people possibly interested in using that could get...
Yeah. Okay.
We have to have ours for seniors. We talked about, see, I think there's many different ways you could do it. I'm sure Ryan's experienced it differently than I have, but in, in my community's district, it was the admin assisted to the high school principal, because of the fact that most of the transportation was done through the high school. So, that was the logical place to keep the...
As you mentioned, field trips and stuff.
Right. But that doesn't mean that that would be the way that we would do in Water Town, but we would set up procedures and priority in terms of who gets what. And we talked about, like, what if there was a situation where you had a contest you weren't planning on? I mean, it's a school vehicle, so therefore, even if somebody signed up for it, it's kind of, sometimes we'd get bumped out of the gym, same sort of thing.
Yeah.
Sometimes it happens, but certainly we try to minimize contests like that. So, in terms of the driver, I know that was one of the things that was talked about in terms of hiring the driver. I think that we need a little bit more time to fully think about that. The community ed driver drives two days a week.
They have two gentlemen driving for them, for different reasons that are available to them. So, and they're not benefited because they fall under the 20 hours a week and/or they're already retired. So, they, that works out for them. They have enough coverage and it works out for them right now. And we talked about whether we would use a pool of drivers for that same purpose, or if we would have one dedicated driver, depending on, you know, who quit it all and seeing what we get for people that are interested. It may be a hard shift to fill after school for somebody to go to work in the middle of the day, because we're not sure. So, we talked about different options for that. But if we had a pool of drivers, it's more likely that some people would do some days and some other days.
Is that pool of driver for the 14-person vans, or is that for the extended day community?
Yeah, the extended, the community ed driver is CDL licensed and is very limited in their availability. So, if we were sort of, let's, sorry, let me break that into two. I think I started on the direction of it.
Yeah.
I'm kind of confused. So, in terms of driving these buses, the 14-person buses, they're not vans, they're buses. And without a CDL, then it opens up lots of opportunities for drivers. So, potentially, it could be staff. I have very preliminary conversations with the union president around that. Nothing has been, you know, agreed or decided or anything, but certainly, starting that conversation around, you know, what would be the implications of the staff number one of these drivers? Obviously, if they were to ever do it, it'd be voluntary and follow the same procedures of checking driving records and informing parents and, you know, being very clear about that. So, certainly, we have a large amount of people who could drive in terms of our own employees. But if that were something that doesn't prove to be tenable, then it's looking into, should we hire people to drive? And with a bus that doesn't require a CDL, we're in a far better place to be able to find somebody who might be able to pick up some hours that are not, because they don't have to have that driver's license. So, I think that there's a little bit more optimism as opposed to the larger bus, which is, you know, more challenging to find somebody who wants, you know, a random assignment every couple hours when they're very specialized in their driving. So, it's harder to find those drivers. So, I think we have a lot more opportunities, not only to maybe pay drivers, but also to, you know, tap into the staff that we have.
So, I have a question. The town, I believe the town has a driver, the council on aging. Is that 30 hours a week?
I don't think so.
Less. Okay. Is there any...
I think that person goes out two days a week.
Yeah, the director said that she has two people that she uses. So, there's one gentleman who passes, you know, two o'clock is the end of this day, because he goes home, you know, because his kids come home, whatever it is. So, he's limited, and he does the boy hunts with, they go shopping and things like that. She mentioned that that bus may be getting to the point where it has to come off the road. I mean, this is just, you know, nothing was in front of her, but she did say that she may be, you know, having some things to think about for transportation as well. And then, she has another person to drive, but because they're retired, they can only do so many hours a week without it affecting their social security. So, she's got the two. And that works out for them right now.
Okay, so there's no interest in, in doing like a job share?
Neither of those people could do many hours for a bus.
I got you. And under this, if we, if the two 14-person buses worked out, is there a plan for the extended, the community ed bus?
So, that would be the next question to tackle, not one that we have thoroughly investigated right now. We do know that it is, I mean, I must admit, that it is highly underutilized. We did get from Deb Curney, it's just the amount of runs that were done, and it's very low. So, I think that the conversation around, you know, what is best for that vehicle will be one that we have to have. And we know that that's, it's a, you know, it's a community ed bus, so I think we have to obviously involve Deb Curney in this in that conversation, which is what she may or may not want to do. I think that she would be amenable to this idea of having these two smaller buses that they could take better advantage of. It's not good to have something that isn't utilized on a very regular basis.
Which?
That hindrance of needing that license, I think, is the biggest issue. It's not that they don't want to use it.
Right, that's the issue. And so, she would, she, did she express an interest in wanting, wanting this type of transportation and being able to use it more often if it was a different, if it was a...
Smaller buses, yes.
Yeah.
Yep. The problem they run into is community ed is after school, so, you know.
Right, I know, and from that, because I feel like they don't have a lot of access.
Well, I mean, I also kind of imagine, like, if you're transporting kids to a field for practice, they're probably getting picked up in there and not necessarily transported back to school afterwards.
I think that's one of the benefits, we're going to try and push, right? Is if they're taken to a field, will be brought back for a long time.
Well, like, even so, even if they are, you still have a two-hour window in the middle where that driver is potentially being paid and they don't need to wait at the field for those kids to practice.
You have a pay driver.
Right. Oh, right, if you have a pay driver, not a coach.
Right, they're coaching.
And you can't do it. Yeah. They're not going to do shuttle runs or crap now.
Right. But if, but the point, take all that out. The point is, I mean, I think the separate question is what to do with the community ed bus that is underutilized. So, potentially, maybe this is something that we investigate with the town in terms of the council on aging bus that might be aging out. You know, that might be some ways to explore. So, I just, I think that the underutilization of the 24-person vehicle makes it right now a perfect time to have a conversation about what to do with that. We just have like that. We focused on just getting some facts around the smaller buses, and then we'll have a further conversation around the 24-passenger bus.
Do you want to continue, do you want to continue on this? Is there anything you want to add?
I think the last two schools that I've worked at, we've switched over to vans and buses. And I was lucky enough to be a child, so I had a little experience with that. And there is time that everybody, everybody could use it. The schools that I'm coming from, we did have first priority for athletics, just because it just saved so much money, it was, it was not bad. When I worked at St. Clement's, the first year that we used the buses, we saved $40,000 in budget. And this was school, I don't know if it was a district, school was school, eventually they're closing. But we didn't have to cancel any of the athletic programs, they were going to cut the athletic budget and get rid of some teams, and then we were able to use the vans, and that saved all the programs. So, that was very successful. And then, I was at Pope Tron Ave last year, and we also used vans, we only got buses for football. We had a fleet of four or five 14, 15-passenger vans, because of the private schools, we could get the insurance to use vans instead of native buses. And it's very, very useful, and I highly recommend them. I think that they show real life very quickly, I think even coming out in the fall. The middle school program, they have some smaller programs, could definitely use it. Golf could definitely use it. Tennis in the spring could definitely use it. Freshman basketball, sometimes they'll go out and they'll have to stay and watch the JV or maybe even ball for varsity game, and then they'll go home. So, instead of them getting home at eight or nine o'clock or, you know, seven o'clock, they can go to their game, coach can drive and drive them back. So, instead of getting home at seven, they're going to get home at maybe six o'clock.
Because before, it was cost for the, this bus, the team separately?
Yes. Yes, so, so, pretty much what they would do now is the freshman team would take the mini-buses, and then JV and varsity would take one bus together, and they would go. So, they'd go 30 kids on that bus, and then the 14, 15 kids that have varsity would go on one bus, or two if we had two of need. And the boys and girls play on different days, so it was both programs, it was probably both 20 days, I'd go alone. And middle schools on different days from them. So, you could really, you see all adds up pretty quick. I think local promotion was $480 a trip. So, it's, it's pretty expensive and it goes, it goes pretty fast. So, I highly recommend them, I've seen them work. The huge advantage that our school would have would be the fact that we don't have to get a CDL driver, because if you had to get a CDL driver, it's a nightmare. Some of the coaches have already expressed in their athletic program that they are willing to drive, and it's much more convenient than the leave to go and need to come back whenever they see fit. And if someone has to start to use the bathroom or other things, they can kind of go as they please. And a lot of coaches talked about getting help for practice earlier, instead of having to stay so late. So, having them be able to drive to the field today would be a huge asset for the program. So, I, I think it's great, I think the presentation looks very good. And I think this is just kind of like a basic savings that we can have, but once we see how the schedules work and what programs that we have, I think we will save more money than what we probably projected, but it's too hard to tell because I have no idea how many student athletes are going to try out. And we want to try to keep everybody involved. But if we try to add some more things in the middle school for programs and need to drive them, I think this is the way to go.
I think that this costing is roughly just possible athletic transportation too, which I'm of positive saving in other places that adds to that.
Did you purchase or lease the schools you were at before?
We weren't in the financial situation to purchase, so we did lease. But the only thing is you're just paying every month, and then at the end of the year, you pay, you know, $12,000 to $15,000 per van, and then you just have to follow back and do it again next year. And then, at the end of the two, three years, you have all these bills, we don't own anything. So, I, I think it'd be more beneficial to probably buy or do one of the three-year leases instead of the car. But we weren't in the situation to do that, so we were just leasing. We were still saving money, but this cost savings would have so much favor if we were able to eventually buy it off and go from there.
So, we got, and we got the venues of 32, and we did the option A at probably 20-odd a year, then potentially, we could make lease payments out of budget line that it, right, is currently standing on the vendor.
Correct.
The thirty-two, you know, would assume would be another twenty-one and then the fuel would be the same.
Is this something, do you think that the social empowerment could use in terms of this with personal people? I know that's one of five thousand plus, probably no better.
Right, so these are all the other great consequences that could happen from this. Yes, yep. And it's, I think about, again, it's not just the savings that we can, that we can get from existing programs. But I think it's the potential new opportunities that we can have for our students that we haven't even begun to think about. For me, the eighteen to twenty-two program, it's all about vocational transitional services. So you need to get them out of our, right now they do most of their services within the schools. No, 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 we should be making connections with business and, you know, having them work at jobs, but we have to transport them. So many programs have that in place, but we don't at this point.
It seems like there's a lot of opportunities that haven't ever been explored because of the cost of transportation.
The thing that, one of the pieces that's missing here is insurance.
Yep.
And is there an additional liability that's needed because we have a coach or a parent or a teacher driving? I think those are also going to be key pieces as, you know, if we choose to move forward.
We did think about that and in truth, I actually asked Town Hall a couple of days ago, but I think everybody's so busy trying to close the year that I didn't get a reply yet. And I also called Maya directly myself twice and did not get a reply from them. So I think it's just, you know, crazy timing. We did think about that, but if, you know, if we had these and then net down whatever the town, if, if the other community ed bus were no longer with the school district, I'll just put it that way. I don't know what even the result will be. You know, there'll be an increase, but it won't be the full cost. Wouldn't go on here because it would be netting off what's currently being paid against the other bus.
I have no problem with the concept, but I do want to, I just want every possible aspect.
Yeah, right.
Get examined because, you know, is Maya going to tell you that if John's driving the bus, you need to add a five million dollar liability policy?
That was on our questions.
So I just, I think that the true cost is, we're still missing some pieces.
Yes, and we, you know, we tried to, we stick up for the time we have.
I know this is problematic.
Yeah, we'll still continue to work on that. And then additionally, the maintenance, which is on here, when I talked to the senior center director, she said that D W does her, the normal maintenance. But if she has a larger repair, it does have to be sent out if it, you know. So there's no way to estimate right now what those costs will be. Hopefully in the first couple of years of the life of it, we wouldn't see anything significant and there'd be warranties. But of course, things will eventually come up. So we, you know, I think probably what I'll do is try and get in touch with some, one or two other districts that are running these that maybe have ones that are in their fourth or fifth year and ask them what they're seeing for repair costs. So that piece is still up there too.
Let me just try to understand the three year lease to zero. So you pay a monthly amount. After, after three years, that total is going to be sixty-two thousand dollars. You own, we own the vehicle.
Yes.
What's the, what's the lifespan of the vehicle? Do you expect it to go another two or three years or?
At least if not longer.
Pardon?
At least if not longer.
About how many miles we put on. So the dealer that we talked to at the fifty-five thousand, I asked him that. He said about fifteen years if we go with the model that's a little more expensive at fifty-five thousand. That's with the assumption that we were doing our athletics program, you know. I know if all these other groups in town are using it, of course, wear a tear. And, you know, and that might be, whatever the discussion is about, if there's repairs and a lot of different departments are using it, is that a shared cost to, you know, ratio wise to, you know, partially using it or whatever? That's something that still has to be determined by the single, the individual using it.
It's just need to be insurance. It's a, at Pope Tron, it's two thousand five hundred dollars for the year. I don't know how much it would be for a public school. And there was no extra liability insurance or anything like that for the drivers. I don't know, probably varies depending on what kind of business you are, but it was around two thousand, two thousand five hundred dollars for the year.
Per van.
Per van.
We'll get the actual form either as soon as they have an opportunity to return the phone call. So we tried to get that in time for this, but we just haven't been able to get that yet.
I would, in my mind, I think we shouldn't be worrying about that everybody else is going to do. We should be worried about where Tom isn't involved in this. I mean, maybe future, there's some potential abuses, but I think we should be focusing on just what we need. Because that's what we're here for. We shouldn't worry about senior center and other things right now. If that happens to come to fruition later, then there's going to have to be a discussion about cost and that type of thing. But I think we should just be focusing on our needs as an athletic program and the school district.
And I mean, I think that based on our preliminary work, that we feel that we would get more benefits out of the vehicle than the cost. We was hopeful that we'd be able to expand and maximize it beyond that, but yes.
I mean, cost is one element, but it's also like Amy said, it's potential for new uses that we don't have.
These things that you highlighted, these are all, I assume that weekends has no restrictions on these things. Because I know there's a few times that we only have a certain amount of runners that can qualify that are neat, but we can't take two runners in a school bus. So they often miss that opportunity. So I like these that you highlighted, those are, those as well. I just appreciate the fact that we are taking this opportunity to talk about it because I know I was not against it. I brought this up to the school superintendent many years ago, old superintendent. They knew that this is what the town needed and this was probably going back eight years now. So it just, the conversation needs to happen because this van that they did end up purchasing through the community ed is now very underused. Because I don't think there was enough discussion and research around it. So I appreciate all the work that you guys have done.
And like I said, there are a lot of project school districts that do have these and reach recent purchases or have been doing it for years. I did put the question out on the listserv to see how many had it, but when I had some other questions on it, businessmen do listserv. Kate Potek, I think came back with, they have five. Tuck's, we just bought two. We just bought one. Wells is buying one right now. So it's average. And so you know all the spending also occurred many times over and over at the other district too.
It looks really cool when you pull up to an event with like your logo on the side of your event. And you're, you know, you're, I, I'm thinking cross country meets, but they're big. I mean, they're all pulled up and they're all lined up and it's really cool, you know.
So I didn't even, I didn't actually think about the middle school students. That's a really good point because.
Those will be unbelievable. There's not that many programs currently. I mean, I'm just getting started, but I could see envision that program probably to get more students involved over there. With some more different opportunities, but I think with transportation being an issue, we'd really like to do that. But having the, the bus could open up a lot of opportunities. I think the amount that they will be using would be, be on the space. The weekends or during the week and other events, I just think it would open up, you know, opportunities that maybe have never been explored.
I think I called you Mark about five years ago and I saw three kids going on a bus to the golf over the Lexington. I was like, oh my God, there's a full bus taking four kids to the golf over Lexington. I paid for taxi before I booked the bus.
Call them an Uber.
Right, that's a good call. I don't think Uber was big. That's what I wanted to know. Okay, are there additional questions, concerns, comments on this? Okay. In terms of a process, I just want to talk for a minute about kind of where do we go from here? Because I just don't want to let this drop. From a financial standpoint, is this something that we, the district would, would have to go to the town and say, you know, here's what we want to do, here's, here's why we need it and make the case, is this, would this be a capital purchase? Or if it was a, I mean, what are the, what are the financial options moving forward from here? If the committee says yes, we want to move forward with this.
I'll start by saying every district is different, every town is different in what their procedures are with some of these things. But in general, if we are paying a lease that is out of the, are operating by the clue of paying a vendor, again, depending on the district, then there would be no further action required once the school committee votes that because it's going ahead of our operating. However, I'm not that familiar with our town yet, so if there are other things that they require or typically require, then I'd have to find that out.
I'm just taking a lot of timing, kind of working backwards from this, from September so that if we weren't going to move down this path, we have access, our kids have access to it where they're going to need it. And is there, do you, do you have a recommendation in terms of the purchase lease and in terms of lease one of the A B C?
Myself, if it were me, making that decision alone, I would, well, there's two things. You know, the three year lease to zero would not require a capital request. It would come out of the budget and be totally fine. If we went with option B, there would be a twenty-two thousand dollar bio, which would be a capital request.
That would be A N.
Correct. So while that would lower our payment by five hundred dollars a month over that three years, which would be beneficial to the school budget, it depends on if the town would agree to in three years from now, the twenty-two thousand dollar bio on each. That's the thing. So that's something where the town would have to consider which way they would want us to buy. Otherwise, again, we would put it through our capital request to the bios in year three. But that would supplant maybe some other things we would have put in our capital request that year or other things we might need. So I think that's something the committee needs to think about too. I can ask, I'll be meeting with Tom a day or two on a couple of other things if I could also feel that out if you would like me to.
Well, just, I'm just, from a financial perspective, just to kind of figure out what, what makes the most sense. And this is the times too.
It's all times too.
These are all times too.
I, I think that if, if we were able to dig a little deeper in terms of the transportation funding that we have currently in place and figure out how much of the allocation do we think could be offset by this? If it proves that it is, you know, pretty much neutral or even just a little bit of a, of a hit, not very much, I think that it would be wise to go as off, I mean, I personally think it would be wise to go with option one. Just because of the fact that it provides us with three years from now, potentially some buses that we might have another twelve.
One meaning purchase or, or A?
A, A the leasing. I like the leasing idea. And then, you know, at the end of the three years, if this is a bust and we find that this is really not, you know.
And you could just sell it back.
You could sell it back. But I, I don't, I, I honestly don't know why that would be the case and that's not something that we've heard from any other districts. So I just think it gives us, I think we can rethink from our preliminary look that we can swing it from the operating budget based on our transportation allocation for sports.
For, for two, two buses out of the three year lease to zero.
Yes.
To be able to reduce that line item enough that it comes.
All right, so if, if we could cover it in the line item, it's a potential to do two A. That would, that's the recommendation you're saying.
Two A, yes.
That's what I would recommend.
I mean, I would say just as clarification, so, I mean, whether it's capital, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but I mean, we could, I think we could purchase the buses ourselves, couldn't we? If we wanted to, we would have to come out of our operating budget.
Right.
I mean, if we wanted to include it in the capital budget that we send to the town and have, then it's got to go through that process. But, I mean, so that would be, you know, a hundred thousand, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We'd have to come up with the right way to buy it. So it's not that we can't, kind of legally, if you will, buy it. The question is, we don't have the money to do that.
Right. This is, this, I think, helps us this year, given the fact that we are in FY nineteen now.
Right.
We don't have that amount of money that's in the budgets.
Right.
I think it allows us to move forward and to have the vans for this year and utilize them as we intended along.
Well, and to your point too, the lease provides a way of kind of testing the waters as opposed to haul out, buy them, spend a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
So the only thing on option A, approximately twenty-one thousand a year each, so ballparking forty-two thousand. We estimate and identify thirty-two thousand in savings that Brian would have in his budget. We know some other things that have shifted, so we feel that we would have the other ten thousand available within our budget. Oh, ten thousand total. So, you know, thirty-two thousand in savings, forty-two thousand to pay for the two. So, you know, there may be, like I said, somewhere else that we have to do budget transfers or something like that.
It sounds like, it sounds like right, right, right. It says that thirty-two thousand could be really a conservative estimate.
It could be, yes.
Right, it could be. This depends on how many, I want to be clear. It depends on how many student athletes try out.
How many teams make tournaments.
Exactly, and there's a lot of moving parts. There could be a chance for much more of a savings. It just kind of depends on how the teams play. I know. It doesn't sound like, it sounds like some of the teams make it pretty far almost every year, so it should be pretty good saves.
Well, and it's also things like kids from the middle, middle school, athletic teams also during the day, kids from the middle school. You've said that was five thousand dollars to, I would be interested to see at the end of the year, if we move forward with two A, what, what it looks like at the end of the year so we can kind of gauge, you know, whether it's.
Right, I like those.
I just test this because we're going to get another water.
Well, you didn't say locomotion for one bus trip.
Four eighty dollars.
We paid four eighty to go from the middle school to the boys and girls level. It's crazy.
It's a tough couple of.
It's a core of mine and you can't do it right.
Okay. And, and just to be totally, what Heidi was alluding to, one of the things that, so we, we budgeted for two Minuteman vans. And we're trying to work through another M O A with Minuteman, which would reduce that transportation cost as well. So that's where I think we feel that we have within our transportation line, we're available to do that.
So again, about process, so it sounds like there's a few other outstanding questions that you haven't gotten regarding insurance and liability. And then if this went to, and we certainly give an update to the full school committee, but if this went as a recommendation to the full school committee at the August meeting, would, would that give you enough time to have a lease, have it ready and done for the short of school?
Well, that really would be the dealer. If they have stock, you know, on the lot, I'm not sure that that would be so. I'm sure the districts are doing the same thing right now.
Right.
So, you know, whether it takes them a little while to get it in or whether they have it sitting there. Obviously, they're not going to order it until we execute all the documents and so. So it may not happen in time. Or we may have to go with locomotion for a couple of months and then pick up. But, but the lease payments would be a couple of months less in this first year and it's so, it's sort of washed itself out consumption.
So I, even, I, I think we're supposed to, even using locomotion for a few months, it does make sense. We worry about our fall athletic schedule is the, is the most challenging.
Except if they're not available, then you don't get a chance to fix that schedule before.
Well, we can't, yes, we need them. We were having, Amy's having a athletic subcommittee meeting on Wednesday. We can talk about more, but I do worry about getting students to fields that we currently aren't able to get them to if we don't have them in the fall. So that's, and we have a, this is a particularly challenging fall schedule. So, I mean, how much lead time do you need, I guess, is the question.
I'll, 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 I'll.
Okay, okay. It sounds like a crazy, not crazy thought, but did we ever explore, I mean, we have so many car dealerships in Pottertown. Would anyone ever approach your car dealership and ask if they would want to partner with us and offer us a vehicle to maybe try before we actually do purchase? I'm really good at that.
I'm going to send you to Murray, Pat, right now.
Right, right there. I don't know.
The problem is, this is a specialized vehicle that we don't normally deal with.
Right.
Neither of our town, what are your own actions?
You'd know the dealers.
Yeah, believe me.
I'm thinking, oh, like they're always going to.
They are, but the general manager just can find it, so.
General manager.
So, you know.
They go, my donation is all right.
Yeah. This is a very specialized.
Yes, the dealer I spoke to was down in East Providence. They're, they're all the ones, but that's just the ones I was able to get through to at first. And, you know, they are specialty bus dealer. They do a lot of the big yellow buses, but they also have these.
No, it hasn't.
I mean, they do it like that, like any question I ask, they, this is what they do. So I did see the actual bid sheet and results from the Millbury one. They actually, they have it on their school website. In fact, and this manager also sent it to me. Their winning bidder was from Maine. So it does go out far and wide on these types of things because they're just not geographically necessarily that close to each other because, you know, it's just not that many customers in the necessary space that buy every year. So they were from all over, from Connecticut too. So they ended up, their, their low bid was.
All right, so, so one more question, just so we can keep this moving. If, since transportation is an issue with athletics, we have a meeting in two days. Would, would some of this information be available? Because it's a component of it.
Yeah, I'll try to get all of this.
Right? Two days, yeah, two days. Forty-eight hours. I just, I don't know, it's a component of it. I just, I wonder when the next time we can get feedback on this again so that we can move this forward. So if we have to have a special meeting, you know, at the end of July or sometime just to, to vote it, I just want to make sure we're, we're giving ourselves enough, enough runway to do whatever we decide.
Or as much as possible so that it can make it happen.
So, so just want to make sure I've captured everything. So I'll, again, make efforts to bundle up the insurance costs. The lead time from when we order to when we can expect delivery. And I will check with some other districts and see if I can find out what repairs are at the fourth and fifth year, say, or further out if they have it.
And is, are there any liability issues connected to insurance was your other question?
I also think that you need to have more than just a brief conversation with the union president. Because that, I think, could also be a speaking appointment for losing coaches. Just.
Yeah, no, I totally, no, it was that. I wanted to at least to let her know that this is something that was being discussed and that if this is the department that we're going, we'll sit down together and talk about it, but that would be like for the staff, definitely, yep.
Was there anything else? So it will continue as part of the same discussion in there?
Was it under my seat, just, or on top of my?
I'm not trying to choke a meeting here, but literally.
Just make sure you see contact or full contact. Okay. We have seven minutes left, so we are going to move on to the next. So this will continue with. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We're meeting Wednesday.
Wednesday at five o'clock.
Yeah, not here.
I don't remember.
I don't remember. There's been so many meetings, I'm not exactly sure.
I can look on my, it was posted, I don't know.
I think we're going to meet at, because we're meeting till five on Wednesday.
No, we're not, maybe we'll send them back.
Oh, it'll be down before.
Yeah.
I know, I know.
I think so.
Yeah, you know.
I think we do.
Okay. All right, next, discussion and vote on staff discount as related to extended day and late bird program.
Who needs a late bird program? So in a, just quickly, Debbie Cordellis, who will be at the school committee meeting as well.
Same one.
It's the same one, yes. There's no amendment, it's going to change.
Oh, okay.
She, she actually pushed us even last year to discuss the fact that we have some staff members who are pretty impacted when we have early release. Because you can't just sign up for early release for extended day. So you either have to be there, you know, you have to be part of extended. So you either have to be there, you know, you have to be part of extended, but you can't just pick up early release as an add-on. That just doesn't happen. So we have a few staff members who are pretty impacted by that, as well as who might want to work for an hour or attend the meetings on Wednesdays or whatever it might be, for whom the late bird program isn't enough to cover the needs that a staff member might have. So what Deb had suggested is maybe we could offer a twenty-five percent discount for staff members, which, you know, given the fact that most of them are not, you know, going to have their children in for the whole entire time, but certainly early release and a couple of Wednesdays would be very beneficial for them if they were to have a discount. She just informed me that we have five staff members that signed up for the late bird, which is nice that we do have some that are taking advantage of that. But she feels that another four to eight might be the number of staff that would take advantage of having an extended day discount. We're not talking about of the, you know, some odd hundreds of children in extended day. This is a very small fraction of them, but it is something that would help to minimize the impact of the demands that we have of our teachers in terms of early release and the Wednesday meetings and potentially a little bit as well for homeless students, whatever it might be. So that was her, her request, certainly I support that. I think that, given the fact it's a small number of people and it's, it's certainly a very goodwill gesture for our staff that do make such sacrifices for our students, I think it would be well worth consideration.
So they would, so the idea is that if, to take advantage of early release, their child has to be enrolled every week on that day?
Yeah, yes.
And you guys think early release sits on the same day?
They, they vary, they generally, used to be on Wednesdays, but we do have one this year that's on a Thursday release, so they aren't always on the same day. So that, that proves to be a little bit problematic. But the Wednesday meetings are always on Wednesdays and they range from an hour and a half to an hour, well, an hour and fifteen minutes to an hour and a half, which is above and beyond the late bird program.
Right, okay. So, so it may not actually sort of mitigate all of their issues for early release.
But extended day. Right, the extended day, if they sign up for, say, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, or whatever day the early release is on, Wednesdays for sure and then, you know, another day, then they would only have to pay for those two days and.
And get a discount.
Yeah.
So it, so the discount is for extended day, not for late bird?
It's not for late bird.
It's an opportunity for labor and then the discount for extended day.
Yeah, the opportunity for labor exists.
Yes.
It's a last being, yes, and not a discount for that. It's if you actually say, well, labor's not quite enough, but I certainly need some help for early release and the Wednesdays, or maybe every day, when you want to stay for an hour and a half, that is well.
Does anyone have any questions or concerns? Yes, and what is the, I assume only talking about like ten, you said eight, eight, four to eight teachers may be interested in the discount. Very minimal amount of money.
Well, also because they're not actually currently using it at all. It would, it would be enticing to get to have an added discount, so it's not.
They're not using extended day at all.
I don't know, I, you can ask everyone, that's a good question to ask. Very much I don't know. Okay, no, it's not, it's not very minimal impact or it's not more of a benefit to the program financially.
So I'm going to propose a recommendation.
So I'll recommend.
Oh, right, I can't do it.
You can, you can, but.
Oh, I always forget and I'm.
No, that doesn't, you can, but I'll, I'll recommend that we, that we recommend to the school committee approval of a twenty-five percent tuition discount for staff. This is all staff, not just teachers or?
All staff, employees.
Employees?
Yeah, yeah, staff.
For the extended day program.
A second. I'll on paper.
Aye.
I'll post, the eyes have it.
Okay. And we are going to adjourn. Do we have a roll call for any of this?
No, it's motion.
Motion to adjourn. All in, thank, all on paper.
Aye.
I'll post, read, you guys have it, let's go.
Next to me.